Testing, 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 testing. Testing, testing, testing.
Mike, all right, let me start over again. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order Committee of a Whole. Today is February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. The virtual committee meeting or hybrid committee meeting is being shown on Comcast Channel ninety-six and also Frontier Channel sixty-three-two. Tonight, we have in-person. I'm Councilwoman, Council President Shirley Surgeon. We have Assistant Majority Leader, you are Assistant Majority Leader, right?
I guess you just made your-
I just made you Assistant Majority Leader, Councilman John Gale. Hey, listen, the two of us is here, so we're doing this. You know, joining us virtually, we have Councilwoman Billadu. We have Majority Leader Marilyn Rosetti, and some of our staff person are also there, Charmaine Craig and George De La Lan. And I think that's Kelly Kirkley Bay, right? Yeah. Due to the weather condition, a lot of our council members are home with the flu. So I thank them for all their service and definitely want to know that, want to let you know, that's the reason they are not here with us all virtually. And Amali had the flu yesterday. Milka went home from work sick today. So this is the time of year all the sicknesses going around. So we have one item on the agenda tonight. It's a resolution sponsored by Council President Shirley Surgeon, Majority Leader Marilyn Rosetti. It's a resolution addressing the historical impact of colonialism in Hartford. The item is a pending item in our committee meeting. For the presentation, we have with us retired Hartford Fire Chief Teal, and we have also a Maxim Max Ashawn. Did I get that right? Mixashawn, I'm sorry. I got Mixashawn will be doing the presentation to the council. If you would join us at the table, we would appreciate it. Thank you. And if you have any opening remarks, you know, one of the things I think I will do is read the last to resolve of the resolution. I think you guys have that there. The last to resolve the resolution states that the Hartford Court of Command Council acknowledges the historical impact of colonialism on the indigenous communities and comments to support and commits to supporting effort that promote the cultural revitalization and self-determination of native people, and be it further resolved that the city of Hartford will engage with native community to explore meaningful partnership that come and, ah, can't speak today, commemorate indigenous history and foster respect for ancestral tradition, and be it further resolved that the city of Hartford will seek to provide opportunities for native residents to reconnect with their cultural practice and ensure that indigenous voices are included in initiatives affecting their communities. And we have a presentation on that, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening. Good evening to the other members of the City Council and my fellow Hartfordites. My name is Charles Teal. My wife Helene and I reside at one forty-five Terry Road here in Hartford, and I am the retired chief of the Hartford Fire Department. One of the things that most people don't know about me is that I am a Hartford history buff. I love the history of the city of Hartford, and it is for a variety of reasons. I'm a member of the Hartford Public Library's Hartford History Center Advisory Board. I'm a past president of the Connecticut Historical Society, that's the name it went by, president of their Board of Trustees. At one point, I literally said, "History saved my life." And I said that during the time that I was sworn in as president of the Board for the Connecticut Historical Society because I had a mentor by the name of Bill Edmonds, who, when I wasn't doing anything as a young man, actually a teenager here in the city of Hartford, asked me the question, "Do you know how many people spent their lives, risked their lives, and sometimes gave their life so you could have the opportunity to succeed?" And one thing that I will tell you about me is this, I am grateful, but I never saw the connection between the sacrifices of the past and my actions until that question was asked of me. Ever since then, I've simply done the best that I can do. Sometimes not good enough, but it's the best that I've got. So what I'd like to do is, in keeping with past presentations that I've given, there is an expression coined by William Shakespeare, who said, "The past is prologue," meaning that which happened in the past is going to have an effect on the future. And I was able to capture another statement that I'd like to read verbatim. I'm not going to stand or sit here and read to you for my entire presentation, but this portion I would like to read. From a collection of psychologists and psychiatrists, it says, "A key component of historical trauma is that it is experienced collectively, is compounding, and can be passed intergenerationally. As a result, it remains a component of contemporary trauma." And the reason why I bring this to your attention here today is because I have studied the challenges we have in the city of Hartford related to violence, literally since I was a teenager. From a very unique perspective, and what I mean by that is I was victimized by violence, like just about every teenager was, growing up in Hartford. So one of the points that I try to make is this, trauma is a direct result of violence. We've got post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety, depression. These are things that plague our society, and it interrupts with our ability to do many things, among which includes learning, understanding, remembering information. In other words, you can't succeed academically and, of course, professionally if you are affected by these things. So with that in mind, what I'd like to do, trying to emphasize the need for us to go over some things related to history, that's my preparation for that, I'd like to go into the next portion of my presentation. This is a photograph of the center of the Circus Fire Memorial, which is at three fifty Barber Street, right behind the Fred Dewish School. That's where the fire of July sixth, nineteen forty-four took place, and I was a member of the organization that helped build that monument, the Circus Fire Memorial Committee. Just to back up a little bit, I first learned about the fire from my grandparents as a child. My grandparents moved here in nineteen sixteen, Benjamin Smith and Pearl Wood Smith, used to teach me the history of the city of Hartford and conversely, what things were like when they lived in Georgia. And I think it's that contrast, seeing how good things were for them in Hartford as opposed to how things were for them in Georgia. It made me come to love and appreciate Hartford. But at one point, my grandmother, upon hearing that the Fred Dewish School was being built in that location on Barber Street, said to my cousin Juanita and I, "They shouldn't have built that school there. That's where the circus fire was." Now, I was just a child at the time, and I came to hear circus and fire in the same sentence, and I went in immediately and said, "What every child seems to say when they hear about, there was a circus fire? Indeed, there was." And she told me as much as she could about it. But in any event, some time passed by, and I became a firefighter. And while a probationary firefighter, I interacted with a man by the name of Bill Sieri, Captain Bill Sieri. Captain Bill Sieri was in charge of Company Nines, which is the corner of Forester and New Britain Avenue, and he actually responded to the circus fire in nineteen forty-four as a very young firefighter. What he told me made me realize the deficiencies that took place as a result of inaction on the part of several departments, including the fire department. And I took it personally, realizing that those deficiencies were brought to the attention of the general public by then-Mayor Bill Mortenson. Mayor Bill Mortenson called for a municipal board of inquiry to determine what caused the circus fire or led to its outcome. And there were several departments that were mentioned in this report of the Board of Inquiry, and once again, like I said, the fire department was one of them. So I went about the process of going to pay my respects every July the sixth, from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen ninety-four, at which time the fiftieth anniversary of the circus fire took place, and we had that ceremony in the Fred Dewish School auditorium. During that presentation, a plaque was given by the Hartford Fire Department and posted on the outside of the Fred Dewish School, and it said, "In loving memory of those we lost in this location, and with everlasting heartfelt condolences to their survivors from the members of the Hartford Fire Department." I will reiterate this as I go on, because eventually I'm going to get to my ask. The point is simply this, there are different ways by which we can atone for things that have gone wrong. One of them is a sincere apology, and at the time, that was our apology. So time passed on from then, and eventually, on the July sixth of two thousand and one, and this is truly relevant, I went to pay my respects and I met a couple by the name of Kathy Spatter Bastow, who is now deceased, and Ron Bastow, her husband. And they introduced themselves to me, and they said, "Why isn't there a memorial on this location?" And I explained to them about the plaque that I just referred to, and they said, "That's not sufficient. There should be a memorial here." I didn't get the point, but oddly enough, Ron Bastow has a doctorate degree in Greek mythology, and he just happened to have in his back pocket a book that said, essentially, it said that there was a town in Greece that suffered from extreme violence, and no one could figure out why there was so much violence. And he said, "So the town's leaders hired a spirit medium to make an assessment of why the violence was so great in their city and town." The spirit mediums came back and said, "It's because you've had people pass away from extreme violence here, and they want to be remembered. You haven't remembered them at all." So I looked at Ron Bastow, and I said, "Are you trying to tell me that that's the problem we have with violence?" Well, what he did was, he asked me, he said, "How's the fire problem in the city of Hartford?" And I said, "Very bad." And at the time, and as my wife Helene will tell you, I used to get up in the middle of the night three, four times a week and say, "There's just too many fires in this city, in this little city." At that time, we had three hundred sixty-four fires per year, structure fires. These are buildings that are actually on fire. After the memorial was built, the number of fires declined, and it got to the point where in my, the year that I retired, it went from three hundred sixty-four to eighty-seven fires. Now, I know this is a bit metaphysical, and it's difficult to believe, because I found it difficult to believe also, but I became a believer, and the point that I'm simply trying to make is this, we have to look at something else. To solve the problem of violence in the city of Hartford, we've been riding east looking for the sunset. Sun does not set in the east, sets in the west. Got to turn around and try and do something different. There's one other point that I want to make, utilizing the circus fire. For decades, until nineteen ninety-one, from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-one, it was believed that that fire was caused by a carelessly discarded cigarette. That was the belief. It was Lieutenant, Fire Lieutenant Rick Davy, now deceased, who proved that the humidity factor was too high for it to have been caused by a carelessly discarded cigarette. So it must have been caused by something else. In the book, A Matter of Degree, written by Don Massey and co-written by Lieutenant Rick Davy, it mentions a man by the name of Robert Dale Seiji. And I've looked into it on many occasions, for many reasons I'm led to believe. First and foremost, Robert Dale Seiji was a runaway. He joined the circus when he was just a teenager. He lied about his age, said he was eighteen. When he was helping to erect the lighting for the circus, he dropped the lighting, breaking it irreparably, and the boss slapped him across his face, humiliating him. What I'm trying to tell you is this, that was his motive. He had the opportunity. He was an employee of the circus. And one other thing of, and there are many things, but one other thing of great importance, that's a photograph of just a portion of the circus fire. That's thirty feet of what you're looking at, of four hundred twenty-five feet. Robert Dale Seiji was able to identify the point of origin. He knew where the fire started. Now, either he was a professional fire investigator, and a real good one, because he located or identified the point of origin, or he started the fire. I say all that to simply say this, in the state of Connecticut's history, since the founding of this nation, the greatest act of violence was arson murder committed by Robert Dale Seiji. He was never tried for that fire, but he was tried for other fires. He was a serial arsonist, and he did serve time in prison. But the point that I'm trying desperately to make is simply this, I met many of the survivors, loved them dearly, and many of them died knowing that justice was not served, that that act of violence that took the lives of more than one hundred sixty-seven people that day, more than one hundred of them children, no one was ever tried or convicted for it. I'm going to go on to the next point. My entire presentation, in fact, the presentation both Mixashawn Rozzy and I are giving, is given in somewhat reverse chronological order, that which happened most recently. Prior to the circus fire, I'd like to bring your attention to the next slide, which actually refers to the, a couple of things, a couple of companies. Between Washington Street and Laurel Street on Capitol Avenue was known as Rifle Avenue. The reason why it was known as Rifle Avenue is because Sharp's Rifle Company manufactured over one hundred thousand rifles there between eighteen fifty-one and eighteen eighty-one. They went out of business because the repeating rifle was created, apparently, I know nothing about rifles, but I'm saying, apparently, the rifle they manufactured was a single-shot rifle. Every time you fired it, you had to reload it. Well, someone created one that could be shot repeatedly, and that put Sharp's Rifle Company out of business, at least in the city of Hartford. However, you may notice that there's also reference to Colt's firearm in here. My wife Helene and I visited the National Museum of African-American History and Culture. When we entered the building, we saw a sign there by John Hope Franklin, a sign with his quote, and it said, "We've got to tell the unvarnished truth." And the unvarnished truth about Colt's firearm is this, if it wasn't for that factory, I would not have had a career. So I am not here just to criticize them, but just to state some facts about it. And the reason why I say that is simply this, when Colt's firearm burned down in eighteen sixty-four, it was almost completely destroyed, Elizabeth Jarvis Colt, Samuel Colt was deceased, had been deceased for two years, but Elizabeth Jarvis Colt had an agreement with the city of Hartford to put a firehouse on the corner of Nepaquash and Highship Avenue. She built it, yes, that firehouse that I believe is now a homeless shelter, that's not the same building, but it was at that same location, the one that was originally there in eighteen sixty-four, we lost during the flood of nineteen thirty-six. But it was at exactly that location. Well, the city of Hartford agreed to provide personnel for the firehouse, and Elizabeth Jarvis Colt only charged them a dollar a year for the firehouse. That was the rebeginning of the Hartford Fire Department. It started out in seventeen eighty-nine as a paid department. Each man was paid a shilling and six pence per day, but it became volunteer, then it went back to paid again. So what I'm saying, because of Elizabeth Jarvis Colt, it became a paid department again, and eventually, albeit a hundred fifty years later, I got a job as a result of her actions. Well, not that long later. But there is one point that needs to be brought out. Colt's firearm, between eighteen fifty-five and nineteen ninety-four, a total of one hundred thirty-nine years, manufactured over thirty million weapons, including the Gatling gun, which was used in thirty different wars. The point that I try to make to people when I talk with them about the violence in the city of Hartford is simply this, the chickens have come home to roost. I don't profess to be a religious person. I have respect for people of faith, all faiths, and I do read various religious publications, including the Holy Bible. In the Book of Galatians, chapter six, verse seven, it says, "Do not be misled. God is not one to be mocked, for whatever a man is sowing, this he shall also reap." We have sowed the seeds of violence in the city of Hartford, and I'm not going to touch on, you know, generally during my presentations on this subject, I talk about the natives of this land. Most of what I know that is factual about the natives that once resided here, I learned from Lee Mixashawn Rozzy, so there's no need for me to say anything about it at all. What I'd like to do is simply say, if I was to be asked the question, so what is your ask? What are you trying to get from all of this that you have said? It's three things. It's the simplest PowerPoint slide I've ever created, three things, educate, memorialize, and apologize. This is literally exactly how we proceeded with regards to the circus fire of July sixth, nineteen forty-four. I give presentations- I give presentations regularly in Farmington on Padilla Day, and many other things, like tours of the Circus Fire Memorial, we educate people, we tell them what transpired here. We memorialize, of course, the memorial, but it isn't just the memorial that is memorializing, it's the words that we share. Every July sixth, at two forty, the Hartford Fire Department, currently under the leadership of Chief Rodney Barco, gathers at that location, and we memorialize, we remember those we lost. And the last one is apologize. And so, with that, I'd like to turn over the rest of this presentation, unless you have questions of me, to Lee Mixashawn Rozi.
We're okay, chief. You keep going.
Thank you.
Good evening. Is your mic on?
My mic's on.
Great.
Oh, hello, oh, yes, my mic is on now. Yeah, I'd like to talk about colonialism, because it's just a word, it's just an abstraction. But colonialism is something that's very powerful. It's a powerful thing that's in our minds, and it's, it's part of what the chief was talking about here, it's the karma of violence that's been created. So before I begin, I'm going to put a circle of sound lines, because I want us to, to
... Councilman John Gale, hey, listen, the two of us is here, so, we're doing this, uh, you know, joining us virtually, we have Councilman Billadu, we have, um, the coordinator, Marilyn, and one staff person, also, Leo Shandell.
Hi.
Hello?
Hello.
Now, I just want to just tell you a little bit about myself before I begin, because I think this resolution is very important. Growing up as a child, I was in a school that was mostly white. And I remember, every afternoon, the teacher would read to us from Huckleberry Finn, and she'd be talking about two characters that really stuck in my mind, Ensign Joe.
One, one second, Mixashawn, I think a lot of our people, uh, did not completely hear when you started your presentation.
Oh, okay.
And, um, would it be asking too much?
Start again?
Yes, and the beautiful instrument you just played.
Oh, okay.
If you don't mind, because a lot of, um, uh, no, I don't think it broadcasts.
Oh. Is it broadcasting now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes? We good?
Okay.
All right.
No, because I said I couldn't, I got a text, I couldn't hear.
Okay, well. and karma. It's not just something that's abstract, because we all know, right now, we're in very desperate times, things are changing. And if we're going to, it, it really boils down to this, when you're an alcoholic, you have to admit that you're an alcoholic. When you're in a colonial state of mind, you have to admit that you're in a colonial state of mind, otherwise karma will keep on repeating itself. And I grew up, I grew up in East Hartford and Hartford. I've been, I'm a homeowner and taxpayer in this town, I'm a product of Weaver High School, went to school, graduated from Trinity College, and I've been a member of the arts community for many, many years. But as a native person, there's always been a movement, my family comes from the, the community that became known collectively as the Windsor Indians, an intertribal community of native people, who, some of them still live in Windsor, including my brother, that's where my father was born, and moved here in Hartford at a very young age. And we grew up here, and as I was beginning to say, going to school, I'll never forget, it always stuck in my mind, because when I was in the classroom, the teacher would read from Huckleberry Finn, and, um, you know, various stories, and two characters always stuck out in my mind, because they would always be talking about American literature, and they'd say, oh, yes, the, um, the Nigger Jim and Ensign Joe. And they would say it like, this is just an ordinary thing, but that really had an effect on me as a child. And as a child growing up, I always knew that I was native, but the thing about native people, especially here in Hartford, there are native people who are recognized by the government, I'm not recognized by the government. But some of, some of my friends that I brought here are recognized by the government, some are not. And it's very important to understand, as a native person, you have, the way the United States government reacts to us is that you have to prove that you're a Native American. You don't have to prove that you're black, you don't have to prove that you're white. You don't have to prove anything, but we have to prove who we are. So, a resolution like this would be very important, because if we're going to counteract all that's going, not only just politically what's going, but also what's going on in the natural world, because we're all subject to the natural forces that are in place all around us. And as indigenous people, we've always tried to stay in touch with those natural forces. And in dealing with those natural forces, you have to admit what has brought us to this point. And most importantly, acknowledge the people who not just once lived here, but we've never left. You know, when I was coming up as a young man, you know, there was an organization here, a native organization called Splitfeather, started by, uh, native, an intertribal group, it was started by native people, even had a powwow, you know, and, and a lot of classes, but things kind of died down. And then in the nineties, I was very, in the eighties and nineties, I was very active with the Canoe Society, the Kuaanawak Canoe Society, and we did a number of things, before Riverfront Recaptured, took over Riverside Park, and took all the basketball courts out. But, um, that kind of faded down too, because of what was going on. Everybody thinks of native people from Connecticut, they want to know if you're a millionaire, because it was around that time when the casinos started to come up. So all the emphasis was there. Well, now, here in the present, we're reactivating once again the Suk'ag Council, I have some members right here. And we do things to not just commemorate native people who were in the past, but to honor and celebrate those who are living now. And I think this resolution is so important, because it's going to start changing the consciousness of people, because Hartford, when it was Suk'ag before colonial times, and even after colonial times, native people have always gathered here. That's why there's many, there's, it's, uh, many different native people who come from all over to here in Hartford. And that's why the government is here, right up on the hill, because where the Connecticut River, or Kuaanawakwa, the river comes through, it's just something that has always joined everyone. And I think it's very important that, you know, the council realizes that, you know, the interest in native people has its ups and downs, it goes ups and down, but here in Hartford, we're in a place when we can actually do something, like jazz. Hartford is known for its jazz, I see, I, I saw that evolve as that. We can be known as, uh, an intertribal place for native people, where native people are welcome, because we have the richest tribes right here in Connecticut, largest casinos right here in Connecticut, but that doesn't really affect people in Hartford. We need to have, you know, more of an emphasis on what's happening here. And so, with that, I want to yield my time that I have left to my brother here, Caleb. So why don't you come up Caleb, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about what
Good evening, my name is Caleb Garrett, I am a resident of Hartford, Connecticut, a member of the Suk'ag Intertribal Council, as well as a member of the Suk'ag Committee, Harvest Committee. Uh, the Suk'ag Harvest Committee has been a festival that we have been responsible in hosting for the past six years, and as of right now, we are working on the Intertribal Council to bring awareness and consciousness of indigenous people that live in the city of Hartford. I can read to you just a little bit of a mission that I hope can come from all of To revive Native American indigenous culture in the Suk'ag, Connecticut area, the greater Hartford area, or Capital area, which has been faded and lost presently virtually unknown to the Capital area. To explore the cultural dynamics, tradition, and beliefs of our Native American mixed heritage community here in Suk'ag. To discover our rich obscured history and preserve the legacy of our ancestors, to become acquainted with their story. To rekindle an interest in American Indian culture by bringing people together, to explore ways to reintroduce and examine the almost-lost society's culture. We owe it to our ancestors to preserve those rights which they have been delivered to our care and pass it on to the future generations. My family moved to Connecticut and Hartford in eighteen seventy-seven, migrating from Essex County, Virginia. At the time, they were indigenous mulattoes, um, part of Rapahehneck, um, indigenous, uh, tribal nations, moving to Hartford, they had to be re-identified as black, in order to become a part of the economic game, to own a house, to own land, to work, to vote, to be registered as an American. Uh, I am here now, trying to rekindle what they have left back home in Virginia, but coming to Hartford, there was a reason and purpose of that migration, we brought a lot of black families that were mixed heritage to Hartford, Connecticut. Uh, over my years, I've never been a part of any tribal entity or indigenous cultural affairs, until we started the Suk'ag Intertribal Council, as well as the Suk'ag Harvest Festival. Um, I am a descendant of Nansmen and Hawa Saponi nations, so those tribal nations are not here in Hartford, but I am a resident of Hartford, and I represent those nations even being present here. So, being a part of this mission is very important, um, more because we've never seen a grassroots idea actually come to a point where we actually have a voice at the table. So, I thank you for having us, and hopes that there is a resolution.
Uh, Jay Shanel, would you guys like to speak?
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
So, what does the intertribal, um, group do on a regular basis? Are you educating, um, the residents of Hartford of this connection, um, with the Native Americans?
Well, the council, I can say, has always been a part of who we are, without actually putting it into words, we just established it as of January of this year. Um, merging from the Hartford Public Library hosting our Harvest Festival, uh, the members of that committee decided to come together as an intertribal group, as we all descend from different nations, most of us are non-government Indians, and don't live on reservations, but we do have access and resources to many that are. So, as we are representatives of the, of Hartford, we are here to raise consciousness and awareness, as well as bring education, workshops, and experiences to those who have been neglected from those rights.
One of the things, the resolve of the resolution, um, spoke with, or spoke to, it says, to seek and provide opportunities for the native residents to reconnect with their cultural practice, and to ensure that, um, native voices are included in initiative affecting their community. How do we do that?
I know one of the things that we, as a group, have been trying to seek is a homeland, a location that can be known as Suk'ag Territory, a place where it's sacred, it's safe, but it's also a place of practice and ceremony and cultural practices and ecosystems. Um, access to the river has been one of the high requests, it's something that most of us have not had access to, but in particular, this group. So, I think, in a nutshell, it would be more of just finding a place, land, or access to the water.
Thank you.
Can I add something here?
Sure. Let me ask any of the council members, um, any questions, comment, John, before I go to, okay, okay. Are you finished your presentation, or?
Uh, I, I'd just like to add.
Sure.
Am I on? Oh, yeah, 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 no, I'd just like to add, you know, I've been involved in educate, I still am involved in education right now through, to, um, well, a number of agencies, but the one I work here in Hartford is Hartford Performs, and I go into schools, and there, there's a lot of interest for people, the young people in this, in this town, about native people, not just here in town, but all over, but especially in here, because this town, it, we have to raise consciousness here. One of the reasons why there is so much violence going on, because people don't understand who they are. They, there are so many ways that we can raise consciousness with just, you know, basic support from the city, we could really move forward. So, that's all I really wanted to add, is, I, I hope you really think about that, because there's all kinds of ways you can help in bringing about that consciousness that we need, because people need to have pride in themselves. I mean, you, you have a, a huge population here in, in, in this, this city that, you know, is of, uh, from Puerto Rico, for instance, and that's, uh, most of the people, this is factual, most of the people in Puerto Rico are of native descent, they have the DNA of, of native people, but there's not all that consciousness. Part of the reason why there is so much violence and, and, and negative things are going, because people don't know who they are. And that's what we're here for, to show people who they are, and, and how we all are involved, whether you're of native descent or not, how that involves us all. So, that's what I just wanted to add.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Leader Rozetti?
Thank, thank you, Council President. Um, first of all, I want to thank the presenters, um, you know, Mixashawn and I've sat on another committee with you, Caleb, thank you for coming forward. Chief Teal, I ha, I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention a story, um, you talked about being the retired fire chief, which we all know, um, you may not remember this, but, I don't know, twenty-five some odd years ago, or twenty years ago, I was on council when you presented your first budget as fire chief, and I, I still to this day can remember you just standing there, just talking about how proud you were to be presenting your first budget, and, and I remember your shoes were so very shiny, but it's always stuck in my mind, and, you know, that you bring such depth and history to our city, how lucky we are to have you. So, that's my first comment, but, like my council colleague, Council President, if, if I go to the actual resolution, and we look at the last resolve, that the city of Hartford will seek to provide opportunities for native residents to reconnect with their cultural practices, ensure that indigenous voices are included in initiatives affecting their communities, which is a great statement, but, you know, whether it's, whoever can answer this, how, you know, how do you, what does that mean? How do you see that, help us help you, what does that mean exactly? What would be a way to do that? Thank you.
I'm listening, sit. Absolutely.
Okay. Introduce it, yeah.
OCO, I am Chief Jay Strong Buffalo of the Isula Nation, I am a part of the Suk'ag Intertribal Community, um, in council. Um, so one of the things to address that we had planned to do, is not only have, um,
to do is not only have traditional stomps and powwows and festivals to have the community come and be aware of, we're looking at a long-term thing, such as a community center, where we can bring in workshops to address some of the issues in the Indigenous community and the community at large, such as drug addiction, people, the young people having no place to go, no activities. We have a lot of skills in which we can teach that pertaining to the land and that pertaining to our people that I think they would be very interested in learning. As Mixashon has said, once you know who you are, then you have a plight to stand up and represent that place. So for the community assistance and help in allowing us to build these places on a land or in a community center-type setting, we can bring in outsourced people from the Indian community to teach and to help with natural herbal medicines and such things of that nature, that will increase the value of who they are in the community, and how to plant plants in the community, how to garden, how to learn how to captivate their own fruits and vegetables, and things of that nature, how to learn about animals and the nature and stuff like that, which brings more awareness of our surroundings and the things that we have to offer. And this brings, this restores the bridge in our communities. We have Native people that have seemingly have been invisible for quite a while, because they have no place. And so when you give them a place, they can stand up and represent who they are, and actually contribute to the community by the resources and stuff that we have available to teach about these things, and to bring more awareness and a more collaboration of people together, so that we can address some of these issues that affect all of us. Because one of the things that happened in Sukiyahque land is that when people came and they visited and they interacted, they learned valuable lessons that they could take home to their families and to their nations. And that enlightened people to be able to want to do better, and to do better, and to help one another. Because we are all neighbors at the end of the day. We are all relatives, as we say in our words. We are all related in some form or fashion. And so I think that having the community, or the politicians, or the government bodies help us to restore land, to bring a community center-type source, and have us come in to educate, and to bring awareness, and to bring workshops that address these issues would be very valuable, not just to Indigenous people, but to the community at large.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Assistant Majority Leader Clark, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief, and the rest of your guests for the presentation. I guess I have a couple of questions. And regarding the space, community center or space that you're referring to, is it something that you're looking to, for the city to identify? Or if there is a particular, I'll say, I'll use the word community center, community center or city-owned property that's vacant, are you looking for the city to give this over to, over to you? And then two, regarding the protective land and space and access to the river, is this something that you've worked with the, our federal partners and have a connection, or if you've also spoken to the Department of the Interior, which actually designates sovereign land?
That's a, you know, the answer to all that would be yes, and yes, but in terms of the Department of the Interior, this is one of the stumbling blocks that always keeps us from actually having access to the things. Because people look at Native people, like I had mentioned earlier, many people only look at us through the eyes and the lens of a colonial perception, which is basically, does the government recognize you? The same government that has been working overtime to erase us, we're now asked, say, "Oh, are you recognized by them?" Some, like I said, some members of our group are recognized, but most of us are not. And this is, you know, in terms of identifying places that the city could be helpful in doing, I think that would be excellent, because we could work together on that. Because we don't want to have something that just, okay, we have a vacant building here, you go over there. It's very important that, you know, we have communication with one another to identify those places. And the river is very important, because the river, we haven't really lost access to the river. That's one reason why I know who I am, because I come from river people. And we, I always grew up on the river. Just by the nature of the river, this is a giant floodplain, as you probably are well aware. And because it is, most of the floodplain cannot be built on, so they couldn't really keep us out of there, and they haven't been able to. And they can't keep us out now, but what would be helpful is the city of Hartford and other municipalities to recognize our rights for passage, free passage on the river, which oftentimes is restricted. But an important thing, going back to the cultural aspect of things, for instance, most people, most of the riverfront recapture and development that's going on is saying, "Okay, you can buy a $50,000 fishing rig, and you can come down there, and we're going to open it up for everybody to come in." That's great. But also, if you have $500, instead of buying it on the junk that people buy, you could have a canoe. For instance, right now, they have in Glastonbury, for instance, they have racks for residents of Glastonbury, that you can put your canoe on, put a chain on it, and they have security, so it won't get stolen. And people can come to use the river anytime they want. Something like that would be great for Hartford. That would be a great, and having access to actual residents, because the thing, it's fine having tourists come in here and bring money, that's all good, but the residents of Hartford are often overlooked in many of these development plans. So what we would say is, yes, access to the river is very important, and access to whatever properties that we could identify, that we could utilize, would be excellent, but we'd have to sit down and talk about it.
Thank you for that. A follow-up question. Are you looking to claim land in the city, such as designated it, designating it as a sovereign space? Like, do you, are you, does your history and your research indicate, ask you, the particular area in the city where you will, you will claim this?
Well, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, because when you talk about claiming a place as sovereign land, yeah, that could be at a futuristic point, but you're talking about something, what we're talking about is having access now to these lands and having the space to actually do these things and reconnect with our culture. Now, as far as making it a sovereign space, that's something that's going to have to come later on. And right now, I don't think we're at the point to do that, to declare it necessarily as a sovereign space, because doing that is going to open us up to the federal government, which you already know what the federal government's attitude is towards Native people, because the current administration is talking about opening up and violating Native rights on federally-recognized lands. So I think we're jumping ahead of ourselves with that. What we're talking about is having access to the river, having a place where we can have a cultural center, and we're not bothered. We could stay over the weekend and stomp and have a fire and do what we do. So, but I wouldn't rule that out, but that's not something that I'm going to entertain, I don't think anybody's can entertain, at this moment. Futuristically, that's another story.
And these are headed on the lines of working with DEEP and other entities to make sure that we're following their protocol and procedures for that land or that space in which we would be occupying. One of the things that are traditional ways is taking care of the land, taking care of the water, doing ceremonies and stuff like that for the water, and teaching that, which gives people more pride in the land and in the water, and understanding of how we care about it, and how we take care of it, and how we need it. And it's very valuable and essential for our living today. So I agree with Mixashon.
Thank you for that. I have two, just additional questions, then I'll be out of your way. Just correct me if I'm wrong, if I missed this. Have you identified a particular space or area? And two, do you all have the means, let's say, if there was a property that's available, do you all have the means for the upkeep of the property, in the maintenance of the property?
Well, when we started the Sukiyahque Festival five years ago, we didn't have anything. But we've managed to, in the last five years, continually building it through contributions and from our own work, to create, you know, something that takes thousands of dollars to do. So in terms of the means to maintain and update the space that we would have, hopefully, I have no doubt that we can do that, because we've demonstrated that we can make that happen.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, sir. Oh, you want to comment? Okay. Councilman Gill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of you. I want to just, a couple of comments. Chief Teal, you really made me think tonight, and I appreciate that. I don't have a particular question necessarily, but I just, you know, reflecting back, the thoughts that you've put in mind here are, they're deep, and I appreciate that. I come from a family of educators. My father was a history teacher, and I very much am of the mindset that education is just such a, such a basic need, a basic concern that we have to always be paying attention to. We know the saying, that those who fail to learn history are condemned to repeat it. And so educating everyone to our history, so valuable, memorializing that, so valuable. So you know, for whatever it's worth, Kathy Spata is someone I've known since she was in high school.
Oh, really?
And I was intimately involved, not as a participant, but she was talking to us consistently when she was doing the project of creating the monument. And I'm a frequent visitor to the monument. I ride bicycle every morning during the summer, and Friday morning, our route is Kenney Park, and we come back up Barber Street. And on July, first week in July, we always stop and visit the memorial. And people are always in awe of the size that that big top was. For those that don't know, if you visit this memorial behind Wish School, they have laid out plantings that show you the outline of the big top. And I dare say, it's bigger than the footprint of the building that we're in right now. It was a massive big top, and as the chief pointed out, it was a horrible disaster that occurred that day. So anyway, I'm leaving here. It's always, it's always a great night when you leave with thoughts, and that are going to ruminate in your mind and maybe produce something. And I know we've had some conversations up here, and we'll have some conversations with other council members. And I also would like to, if I'm not mistaken, you mentioned the Sukiyahque Intertribal Council, but I don't think the reference was made clear. And it's perhaps the case that many people don't know, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe Sukiyahque is the name for this area that the natives used to describe the Hartford area. Am I correct about that?
Yes, black earth.
Yeah. So when we talk about Sukiyahque, we're really talking about Hartford.
Yes, yes. And Hartford has always been a central location for us, even before colonialism, and to the present day. And I just want to also mention, you know, one of the council members asked about, you know, do we have the means to do these things? I just want to reiterate that, like, we've gotten support from the Hartford Public Library, Trinity College, Ebony Horsewomen, and Kenney Park Sustainability Project. We work with local people, and we make these things happen. We can make it happen.
Well, kind of picking up on Chief Teal's atonement concept, it may be that, as opposed to the burden on you, the burden is on all of us here in the city of Hartford and the state of Connecticut, to take some accountability and some measures. And Mixashon, I know you know, we served on the committee together. One small step that the city of Hartford did take was to change the name of October 12th to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And in keeping with that, it may very well be, this is a city that's full of parkland. We, I think I've been told at some point that we had more parkland as a percentage of our land area than just about any other place in the world. And so the concept of carving out some part of that, some small part of that, and designating it as maybe Sukiyahque Park is probably not too great of a stretch, and maybe locating it right on the Connecticut River would not be too great of a stretch. We've got 10 miles of riverfront, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
So maybe there's some little, so we'll think about it, and we'll talk about it, we'll see what happens. But really appreciate you all coming here tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. You know, we're just sitting up here, you know, Councilman Gill and I are talking, and we're saying, you know, for me, when Chief Teal, I met him a couple of, I've known Chief Teal a long time, but didn't know, didn't know he was a historian. And so one of the conversations we had, and he told me about the war that happened, and Indians were sent to Jamaica. And you're right, chief, I went and did my research. And I'm like, wow, this is really cool. Didn't know, you know. So you learn so much, and I've learned so much from Chief Teal, in some history of the city of Hartford. But one of the things we do in the city is that we celebrate, you know, Black History Month, okay? And I'm sure, if you came in a little bit early, you see a lot of, you know, our people in the city who have given, have made the city so beautiful. I would like to see if you have any information you could share, so we could also display that for the rest of October.
Well, that would be good, but you know, it's like, atonement is good, apologies are great, but actually, contributing to the living culture.
Yes.
You know, if you had come to our, you know, we have our celebration, you would be moved, I think, because it is moving when you actually have people, statues, I mean, I guess that's good, but I'd rather see the money go to dancers and singers and artists who are actually, you know, promoting the culture. And that's what we're about, you know, living now, not in the, well, the past, we go to the past, but we're living in the present, and it's very important to do that, to support those who are living now.
You know, for me, one of the things which I found out, you know, is that our kids in our city don't know our history.
No.
And they don't know the people who have moved on before us, and their contribution, like your tribe, to the city. You know, so one of the, one of the things is, during this month, we try to bring our kids in and try to show them what it's civically giving back and being part of this community of people in the past. And as you said, you know, what I've, things I've learned is that, you know, didn't know, they just learned today, that Sukiyahque is Hartford. So I would like to put that as part of our celebration, so our kids can see. This is, when you talked about apologizing and action now, you know, want to make that part of us. Chief, you wanted to say something?
Yes, I have a tendency to, there's an expression, I can't remember who said it, I'd credit my source. The expression is, if you, if you live in the past, you're depressed. If you live in the future, you're anxious. If you live in the present, you're blessed. I will confess, I know a lot about history. I'm a history buff, but I know a lot of things about history. But it's living in the past. What I appreciate about Lee Mixashon Rozi, and his associates... living in the past. What I appreciate about Lee Mixashawn Rosi, and his associates, is the fact that they're living in the present, and they can tell us how to proceed, so that we can, we can show gratitude for all that they and their ancestors have done. You know, I look at the, the piece of the charred oak tree here.
Yep.
Yeah. That tree fell in 1857, to the best of my knowledge. And for a thousand years, it was utilized by the natives. And they taught the original European settlers, meaning the Dutch, that when the leaves are about the size of a mouse's ear, it's time to plant corn. And the reason why I live in the past like that is because I'm trying to make people aware of the fact that the European settlers would not have survived here if it weren't for them. And out of a sense of, and I think I mentioned it during my first opening statement, it's all about gratitude for me. You know, just show gratitude for all that they've done. And they've laid out the, the plans by which it can be done, so I thank you for your time and attention.
Well, I would like to continue this conversation in a smaller scale, you know, you know, maybe have another meeting, small meeting, you know, with some of the staff in the council, so we can see what our next step will be. Okay? So I know Councilman, Assistant Majority Leader, Staffperson Charmaine Craig was very instrumental in getting us this far. So I'm going to ask Councilman, Councilwoman Rosetti, if she wouldn't mind if Charmaine could get us back together again, and see where we can, you know, put a little, get a little area off of the river. But it's going to take, it's going to take conversation, and it's going to take work
Yes.
to get there, and how we can do this. So...
I'll be delighted to assist.
Pardon?
I'll be delighted to assist.
Right, oh, great. So Charmaine, it's gonna, you're going to be in charge of getting us together for the next step of how we can apologize and make this happen in our city.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so any closing remarks? Do we need a motion? This is a presentation? Absolutely. Yes, please, do a motion.
So I'll make a motion to send this back to council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made in properly second, to send this back to the overall council with a favorable recommendation. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Clark? Councilman Rosetti?
Sorry, my computer died. What did I miss?
We just had a motion on the floor.
Okay.
To send the resolution favorable back to council.
And there's a second?
Councilwoman...
Yes.
Yes, yes, I vote yes. Sorry, my computer died. Sorry.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion passed. We're sending this back to council with a favorable recommendation, and our next council meeting, I believe, will be February 24th. And then Ms. Craig will get together to get us our next step into a smaller conversation we'll have. So I want to thank you, Chief Teal, for bringing us this knowledge, this history. I want to thank you, Mixashawn, to actually really educate us. So thank you so very much. And Chief, thank you very much for your presentation, being here, and we're hoping that, you know, and we're hoping, we will get together in the next couple of weeks and see what we can do to map out a small, you know, what is next step we can do this to accomplish. Okay? All right, so I now call this meeting to a close. Thank you so very much for being here, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.